All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Boise City Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearing. Few things to start out with for tonight's proceedings. Everyone from the public entering the hearing virtually has been automatically muted and cannot speak. As the item you're interested in comes up for discussion, you'll be called upon and unmuted. There is a chat function in Zoom. However, this is not part of the record and should only be used if technical difficulties arise. Our procedures for public hearings begins with a presentation from the planning team. Then we'll go to the applicant and then the representative of the registered neighborhood association, followed by questions from the commission. After that, we proceed to public testimony, starting with those who are in person. Then who signed up on the sign up sheet in advance, and then anyone else who raises their hand virtually. If you're attending through your telephone, you can type in star nine to raise your hand. Each member of the public is allowed up to three minutes for testimony. We are strict with this time as it is limited in code. Finally, the applicant is allowed five minutes for rebuttal, after which the hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate and render a decision. Mr. Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Crystal. All right. Good evening, everyone. We are citizen volunteers appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. We make final decisions on conditional use permits, variances, and appeals and recommendations to the city council on subdivisions, rezones, annexations, and code or comprehensive plan amendments. Any decision made tonight may be appealed to the city council, provided that the appeal is filed within 10 days of this hearing. In order to file an appeal, you must have given written or oral testimony at tonight's meeting. So that's why it's important to give your name and address when you testify tonight. We utilize the consent agenda. This means that if the applicant agrees with the staff report, and if there is no public opposition, the item will be placed on the consent agenda. All items that are placed on the consent agenda are approved with one motion without further public comment. For items not on the consent agenda, we will hold a full public hearing in the order just detailed a few minutes ago with staff, applicant, neighborhood association, and then the public testimony. Thank you all for attending tonight. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Danley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Seha.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Dome. Stallings.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Very good. Okay. As mentioned, we're going to start with the creation of the consent agenda. First up are the work session and meeting minutes from September eighth. Hope everybody's had an opportunity to review. Is there any comments with regard to either of them? Okay, great. Hearing none. We'll go ahead and put both the work session minutes and the meeting minutes from September eighth on the consent agenda. New business. Okay. Item A is a request for a two-year time extension. CUP twenty-three dash thirty-five, The Land Group, Inc., located at thirteen nine eighty-four West Jasmine Lane, is the applicant in chambers or online? Seeing none, I'm assuming that they are in agreement with the consent agenda. Is there any objection to placing item A on the consent agenda? Seeing none, go ahead and put item A on the consent agenda. Okay, item number two, we're going to skip over item number one. That's going to be a full hearing. Item number two, CAR twenty-five dash twelve, this is Centurion Engineers, located at twenty-seven oh five and twenty-seven oh nine North Coal Road, which is a rezone of approximately point eight five acres from R one C to R two. Is the applicant present? You are. Okay, great. Let the record show that the applicant is present, and do you agree with the terms and conditions in the staff report?
Yes, we do.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Let the record also show that the applicant agrees with terms and conditions of the staff report. Is there anybody in chambers or online who wishes to testify in opposition to item number two, CAR twenty-five dash twelve? Seeing nobody in chambers or online, unless there's objection, we'll go ahead and place item number two on the consent agenda. Okay, three is a deferral. We'll come back to that. Moving on to item number four, CUP twenty-five dash twenty-six, located at thirty-six hundred North Harbor Lane. This is Idaho Electric Signs, a conditional use permit for an off-premise freestanding sign on one point seven seven acres in an R two. Is the applicant present or online? Okay, great. And do you agree in a consent with the terms and conditions of the staff report? Wonderful. Let the record show that the applicant is present and agrees to the terms and conditions of the staff report. Is there anybody in chambers or online that wishes to testify in opposition to item number four, CUP twenty-five dash twenty-six, conditional use for an off-premise freestanding sign? Nobody in chambers, nobody in line without objection. Unless there's objection, item number four will be placed on the consent agenda. Okay, last up, item number five, SUB twenty-five dash twenty-nine Vancouver subdivision, located at three zero zero five West Malad Street, a preliminary and final plat for a residential subdivision comprised of three buildable lots on point two eight acres in an R two zone. Is the applicant present or online? Wonderful. And do you agree with the terms and conditions in the staff report? Wonderful. Let the record show that the applicant is present and agrees with the terms and conditions of the staff report. Is there anybody in chambers or online that wishes to testify in opposition to item number five, SUB twenty-five dash twenty-nine Vancouver subdivision? Nobody in chambers, nobody in line. Unless there's opposition without, let's go ahead and put item number five on the consent agenda, and that is the end of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as constructed.
Wonderful. Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Moore to approve the consent agenda as constructed. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Seha, thank you very much. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Moore and a second by Commissioner Seha to approve the consent agenda as constructed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Danley.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Deha.
Aye.
Torres.
Aye.
Stallings.
Aye.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Wonderful. Okay, we're going to go ahead and jump to item number three because this is a deferral, and then we'll come back to item number one for the full hearing. Item number three, CAR twenty-five dash oh five Axis Design Group, which is nineteen parcels within seventy-six hundred to seventy-eight hundred Gratz Drive and two hundred to four hundred South Auto Drive, which is a rezone of approximately thirty-six point eight three acres from MX three to MX two. Is the applicant present or online? Okay, wonderful. And is there anybody in the chambers? Well, let me make sure. So just to make sure you're requesting a deferral to November third, is that correct? Okay, fantastic. Is there anybody in chambers or online who cannot be here and wishes to testify on item number three, CAR twenty-five dash oh five? Nobody in chambers, nobody online. Okay, in that case, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I move that we defer item number three, CAR twenty-five dash five, to the November third hearing.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Moore to defer to November third. Is there a second?
Second.
I think that was Commissioner Torres, yes? Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Danley.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Deha.
Aye.
Torres.
Aye.
Stallings.
Aye.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, the one and only item. Item number one, CAR twenty-five dash one three Givens Real Estate, located at thirteen twelve, thirteen twenty-eight, and thirteen thirty-four East Lewis Street zoning map amendment to remove a design overlay district from point one zero five acres in an R one C slash HDO zone. And looks like, Mr. Dennis, go ahead and take it away.
Mr. Chair, real quick.
Oh, Commissioner.
Sorry, Matt.
Yep, go ahead. Commissioner Schaefer.
I just want to acknowledge that I am an employee of The Land Group, and our office conducted a survey on the parcels at this application, but I have no knowledge of the application or have ever met the clients or the owners for this project. So just wanted to clear the air on that.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners, and good evening. As you said, the item before you is a zoning map amendment to remove a design review overlay district from one point zero five acres in an R one C slash HD dash O slash FP dash O, residential traditional with historic design overlay and flood protection overlay zone located at thirteen twelve, thirteen twenty-eight, and thirteen thirty-four East Lewis Street. In nineteen ninety-five, city council approved a rezone of approximately seventy acres containing over one hundred properties along Warm Springs Avenue to establish a historic district overlay to reflect this area as a historically significant corridor. This project report identified three defining characteristics of the area, being these lots are oriented towards Warm Springs Avenue, contain contributing structures, and have access to geothermal lines. In two thousand twenty-two, a minor land division was approved, which split off the three subject properties from the now northern neighbor's backyard. Then earlier this year, the applicant submitted this application, which is paired with a major certificate of appropriateness for the same proposal to remove this overlay, which was heard by the design, or I'm, excuse me, was heard by the Historic Preservation Commission, who rendered a recommended approval to city council. And just as a reminder, Planning and Zoning Commission is also a recommending body to city council, who will render a both, a final decision on both of those items concurrently. I say within the project report and summarized by this table, this table, the subject properties, since this division, minor land division was approved, no longer exhibit the defining characteristics of this overlay. The correspondence which was received in which concerns were expressed that primarily focus on future development of the site and its potential impacts on the neighborhood. However, the applicant has not currently proposed development plans on these properties. The removal of this historic district overlay from the subject properties does not affect the base zoning district of R one C, and therefore, this application, if approved, will result in no change in the density allowance, building height, and all other zoning standards. Rather, the overlay simply requires approval of a certificate of appropriateness application to precede development to ensure that future development is congruent with the historic elements. Therefore, the removal of this overlay will no longer require approval of a certificate of appropriateness to precede development thereon. And also in attendance is Richard Jarvis, who is a Historic Preservation Senior Planner. He's the assigned planner for the accompanying major certificate of appropriateness, and we can lean on his expertise if needed for the, you know, focusing on the historic preservation aspect, the of the design, the certificate of appropriateness case, obviously. And in conclusion, the planning team recommends approval of the zoning map amendment, and I will stand for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Hold tight. Okay, is the applicant in attendance? Okay, are you Dan Givens by chance? All right, please come forward if you wouldn't mind, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have about ten minutes. I'm assuming that's enough.
I need a lot less time than that.
Okay, sounds good.
One up here real quick. Yeah.
Should be good to go.
I'm here somewhere. Oh, this is not part of it. Yeah, this is not part of it.
Sorry. Way too much information. Yeah, take down. There you go. Okay, my name is Dan Givens. My address is twelve twenty East Bannock Street, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven one two. I am the applicant for CAR twenty-five thirteen. Here we go. Good evening. Thank you, Chair Danley, and commissioners for allowing me to present this application. Again, I will keep things short. I'm really here for just one item that seems to keep rearing its head, and there appears to be a central concern expressing, expressed in neighborhood, neighbor letters that rezoning will somehow allow usher in an increased opportunity for multifamily or high-density development. This premise is not factually accurate for a variety of reasons. The three Lewis Street lots are already platted and zoned R one C in terms of density. This application doesn't change that. The historic district overlay only controls design, not density. The historic district overlay does not restrict or permit multifamily development. Multifamily is already allowed under both R one C, HDO, and R one C, subject to plat approval. Any proposal to increase future density beyond the approval, proved plat would require a new subdivision application and public review. So there's just three lots here, and I think our neighbors will be happy to understand the property is under contract and is scheduled to close in less than thirty days. That buyer has already drawn plans and is pursuing a lot consolidation application, bringing it from three lots down to two, a thirty-three percent decrease in density. So I'm hoping that with this information, that issue will be solved. Thank you. I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move to if the East End Neighborhood Association is Kevin Fritz in attendance? No, and online? No. Okay, so with that, we will then turn it over to the commission for any questions. You might want to pop back up or at least get a little closer.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
So this is a question for the city. So to confirm, there's no change to any sort of different zone that would allow more density. The density allowances will remain exactly the same. You know, any use allowances will remain exactly the same. The only piece that kind of goes away with this rezone is just that requirement to do the historic application, right? Nothing else changes.
Commissioner Moore, that's exactly correct, yes.
Good. I'm going to just jump in real quick if I can. There, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Moore said rezone. I think we've got to be really careful with our terminology here tonight, that there is no rezone being proposed here, and I think that was just a slip up from Commissioner Moore. That's understandable, absolutely, but I just think we've got to be very careful here that we're not talking rezone whatsoever in any manner.
Just the removal of an overlay.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Right, and to clarify, I think, yeah, I think that's probably a little bit confusing the way it, because it's a rezone application, right, CAR?
Right, but.
Mr. Chair. Member of the commission, sorry to interrupt. The formal application is called a zoning map amendment. So it's not technically a rezone. A rezone would be changing from one base zone to another. I, as in R one C to R two, the zoning map amendment is the mechanism used for adding or removing overlays like this.
Ah, there we go.
Taking an eraser to the map. Okay, any other questions? What?
I think we probably should throw. I got a couple. Tony, do you have questions?
Yeah.
Go for it.
Okay, sorry. Matt, my question's for the city, for the planning team. So just to clarify again, any development that went on at this location would trigger the normal development process, whether it's a public hearing or administrative approval before anything would be built.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Torres, that's correct. Any use that's allowed or not allowed under the R one C zone would remain unchanged. So the permitting process that's and the allowed uses that are within the R one C zone is unchanged by this.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Matt, could you pull up your presentation? I just want to, for the benefit of everybody in the audience here tonight, I just want to confirm what Tony just mentioned, too. I think the visual helped. That first, that black and white slide, the ninety-five there, thank you. So Matt, just to clarify for everybody in the audience, what we're looking at here is the historic, the Warm Springs historic overlay, and it is the dark, bold line is the existing boundary of that overlay, correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schaefer, that's correct.
And that is the overlay. Every one of the parcels that we're looking at within that overlay are all zoned either R one C or R two, correct? I believe.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schaefer, I believe on the western side, closer to Warm Springs and Broadway Avenue.
Yeah.
It could be zoned MX one. I think that Pioneer Cemetery is also zoned A one, which is parks.
Gotcha.
But the majority of the lots fronting onto Warm Springs Avenue are either R one C or R two. That's correct.
Great, okay. So I'm just trying to lay the groundwork here for everybody in the audience, that there's zoning on all of these parcels already. And what this application is doing is just taking away the overlay, and we're not changing the zoning for the parcels, correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schaefer, yes, that's correct.
Great. Thank you very much. That's all I think I needed right now.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
To follow up on that, we're not removing, I think it's the, this one, this parcel doesn't actually include the floodplain overlay. So we're not changing that at all, anything to do with the floodplain.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Moore, the floodplain overlay is remaining. That will not be removed.
Okay.
Yeah, and to clarify, Mr. Chair. And to clarify, my point is that the historic overlay is going to remain on the parcel that fronts on Warm Springs Boulevard, and we're removing the overlay on the three new parcels that front onto Lewis Street to the south.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schaefer, that's correct.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, Matt, can you pull up that black and white map again? I just want the record to show that I graduated high school in nineteen ninety-five, and that looks like it should be in the Idaho archives. What were we doing in nineteen ninety-five? That was the technology? Yeah, that's sad. Any other questions or comments? Not comments, but questions?
I just wanted to point out, I also graduated from high school in nineteen ninety-five, so I sympathize.
So sad to me. Okay, with that, if there are no many, no other questions, we'll go ahead and go to public testimony. Thank you. Hold tight. We'll get a chance for rebuttal.
Thank you.
I have nobody signed up. However, I know there are people in the chamber. Yep, we'll go ahead and have you come up one-on-one or one by one. So if you want to testify tonight, now is your chance. So go ahead and come on up. And if you do, all we ask is a couple of things. State your name and your address for the record. You'll have three minutes to testify and just adjust that mic accordingly, and we'll get your name and information here. And I see there's one person online, too. We'll get to that person momentarily.
And I did sign up.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, so I don't, maybe there's a disconnect.
Yeah, that's okay. We got you.
Okay, so my name is Helen Stole. I live at one three six five East Lewis Street, across from the project site. I request your consideration of two issues relative to the proposal. We request that any approval be conditioned on the preservation of the mature trees that lie in East Lewis in front of the properties. At the neighborhood's request, the city issued a waiver to standard street improvements to protect these specific trees for pre-preservation purposes, streetscape design, pedestrian safety, and traffic calming values. They are historic trees like those in the Warm Springs historic district. It would be unfortunate if removing the historic district overlay resulted in removing protection for the trees. Conditioning the approval on tree preservation would address this concern. The city of Boise Parks and Rec Department, in their letter of September tenth, addressed the importance of maintaining these mature trees and specifically expressed concerns about protecting their root structure during any proposed detached sidewalk construction. The neighborhood where we live on the south side of East Lewis Street is called Warm Springs Woods. The name makes it clear that the trees define our neighborhood. In addition to the mature street and yard trees, on one side of the neighborhood is the city arboretum, and on the other side is the greenbelt. The applicant states in his letter of explanation that existing, quote, existing trees are to remain, unquote. Conditioning the rezone on tree preservation ensures these trees will remain protected, calming neighborhood concerns about losing the trees and their values. Second issue is driveway and curb cuts. When this project was initially proposed, we understood there'd be one shared access driveway. That driveway cut is in place, but recent comments suggest more driveway cuts may be considered once the lots sell. Obviously, additional curb cuts will impact the trees, the pedestrian-friendly sidewalk, as well as traffic flow. We already have to look in forward directions when we back out of our driveway, so give us a break. A shared driveway for the three lots would minimize traffic and safety impacts on neighborhood, as well as support the health of the frontage trees. Many people in the east end as well use this area to access the greenbelt on foot or bicycle. Minimizing curb cuts by utilizing a shared access point will help maintain neighborhood ambience, tree health, traffic flow, and safety. Ideally, these new properties will integrate into and enhance our neighborhood, not disrupt it, and we ask for your action in ensuring that that is the case. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Okay, is there anybody else in the chambers that wishes to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the one and only person that's online. That person is Carrie Ellen Elliott, and go ahead and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Carrie Ellen Elliott. My address is one three zero nine East Lewis. My husband and I have lived there for about twenty-eight years. We live directly across from the development or the parcel, the subject parcel, and will have to absorb any of the impacts that occur over there, and we understand that. I am glad to hear there's a contract on two of the lots for a single home. Our concerns are, and I had a PowerPoint prepared for you just to show you some other houses that are along Lewis Street, but I'll make this really brief. The chicane that is naturally there didn't cost anybody anything, has the trees, these matures established trees alongside them. They provide an essential safety feature for our street. We get a lot of speed on Lewis Street occasionally because it looks a little shotgun, think Firebird Raceway. It is the only inlet and outlet for all the streets in our neighborhood, and that means everybody, all the service vehicles, et cetera. It is essential that we keep the waiver in force that the city of Boise granted, acknowledging the safety importance of this chicane with the mature trees. The second issue has been mentioned. It's the driveway cuts where our house is right across the street from the development. We have, it'll be right out our front porch. So where that driveway cut goes is important for two reasons. One is how it's positioned in relationship to the front of our house, and the second issue is if it impacts the trees, the mature trees that line the front there. We really would hate to see that be jeopardized. That, and the only other thing we had really was the design factor involved in this. With the release of the overlay, we lose design review. And with those driveway cuts come garages, and the orientation of those garages is another issue of concern to us. If there's somewhere in the process where these these design elements can be addressed, we'd greatly appreciate knowing where that could be. And that pretty much, I'm saving you from the 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 PowerPoint that we had set up, but I just would really appreciate, we'd really appreciate some direction on this for the concerns that we've had since since twenty twenty-two, when this project was first brought to our attention. So I appreciate your time. The bottom line is that what happens on the subject parcel happens to us. Without design review, these concerns may not be publicly.
Thank you, Miss Elliott. I'm going to have to pause you there. Appreciate it. Yep, thank you for your three minutes. Okay, is there anybody else in chambers? You'd like to go ahead? You can come on up. And same thing, state your name and address for the record in three minutes.
Hello, my name is Ken Whitey Meyer. I own the subject properties. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The statement has been made that the sidewalk did not cost the city or anybody anything. Actually, I paid one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to put in the sidewalk as per city's request before they would grant building permits. Secondly, when people buy property, they are would like to do whatever they'd like to do with it. And regarding the driveways, they would obviously have to go through a whole separate permitting process subject to the this committee and others. And it is not me that has applied for curb cuts. Thank you very much.
Before you head out, just making sure, can you pick one of the addresses to say?
Thirteen twelve.
Okay, thank you.
East Lewis and surrounding properties.
Sounds perfect. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, anybody else in chambers? I don't think there's anybody else online. Up, go ahead and come on up. Same thing. If you can, state your name and address for the record. I have three minutes.
I'm on my way to soccer game. My name is Rosie Rutia, and I'm at 1188 East Lewis. My mom lives at 1200. I hadn't really thought about these curb cuts before the neighbors spoke, but people keep talking about these trees. They're not just trees. I grew up in this neighborhood. They're massive, massive trees. I mean, they're incredible. And so if they're saying that they, you know, the trees won't be affected, I'm not certain. I'd have to go look at it tonight. I'm not certain how that could be the case without having the driveway entry where it was originally going to be when I have had a few friends, a friend who previously had this under contract. So I do want that to be considered because that does seem like a little bit of a conflict to me. If they're saying the trees are not gonna be impacted, I guess we do need to know, how are they gonna get those? I appreciate the, the sidewalks being put in. We had to do that as well at my mom's property to subdivide, but that is just kind of the way it is. So I hope you guys consider. I wish someone would have had a picture of these trees because they are truly spectacular if you've been in that area. Anyway, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good luck to your soccer team tonight. Okay, anybody else wishes to testify? Anybody online? Okay, it looks like we will go ahead and close the public testimony portion of things, and we'll go ahead and go back into rebuttal. So you'll have a few minutes. You state your name and address one more time for the record. That would be great. And tell us what you gotta say.
Thank you. Dan Givens, 1220 Hispanic Street, Boise, Idaho, 83712. Regarding the trees, I believe the owner did have a city arborist come out and inspect them. They are black locusts, probably an average of maybe 12 to 15 or 13 to 15 inch caliber trees. There's about maybe seven of them. They're about 20 feet apart. The arborist indicated they were, his term, trash trees. But regardless, there's no, this application does not address removing any of the trees or touching the trees. When the sidewalk was installed, our contractor, general contractor was very, very specific and careful about where the excavation took place for those roots and did all they could to minimize any damage to the trees. So there's no concern about trees as far as we're concerned. As far as driveway and curb cuts, you know, Matt, can you bring the plaid up a chance? Do you have a copy of that? Quick. There you go. Lots are in red there. You can see there's a, a large half acre flag lot. And that is a wide driveway for fire. There is also, there's no shared drive per se. There's an easement in that driveway for the flag lot that goes back to the White Myers property in the north, and it's contained in that driveway. So I believe ACHD was talking about that when they said shared drive. The other two lots are about a quarter acre each, and they all have frontage on Lewis. And it's not up to us to decide where curb cuts will or won't be when we don't have housing plans at this point. That's gonna be down the road when and we will have plenty of time to comment on that with when the homes are, are submitted for, for permit. But so I hope that gives you a good idea. The trees there are, you know, you see Lewis Street frontage, I would guess to say the trees are on about two-thirds of the strip there from east to west and then relatively open on the western side. So just a quick correction from Mrs. Elliott's comments prior, the contract is on all lots, not just two. And again, I just wanted to mention that buyer is planning on doing a lot consolidation and turning it into two lots because they would like a .87 acre lot. They plan on a home that's about 5,500 square feet, I'm guessing. It'll be at least three and a half million dollars. At the end of the day, it will be an exceptional home. The, the buyer is a builder and well-known. I will keep that confidential at this point, but it will do nothing but increase the values of the neighborhood, in my opinion. And design review, there is, there is design review. I believe Ms. Elliott mentioned there's no design review. Well, of course, there is when, when those building plans are submitted for review. There will be ample time for the public to, to discuss that. So that's really, that's really all I've got. I'll stand for commissions or questions.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And the item is now before the commission. Yep, the item is before the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Who said that? Mr. Stallings, thank you.
A question for the offhand.
Well, we got, can't ask questions now. That's okay. We can.
So to clarify, we aren't excavating trees? Or it was that, I didn't understand that part.
So the item before us tonight is nothing more than to remove a map component that has to do with the historical overlay. And the historical overlay has particular criteria, which are in the staff report, but just as a reminder, has to do with fronting East Warm Springs Avenue, direct access from Warm Springs, et cetera, which these lots no longer fulfill because they've been severed from a lot split and now essentially take access from Lewis. And so the request before us this evening is, is about the removal of the historical overlay component, and at this point, has nothing to do with the development application that might be pending.
And Mr. Chair.
I think, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Moore.
I think also, I don't think that we've got an avenue to condition a CAR application.
Right.
As well. Okay.
Well, hold on a second. Let's, let's let Crystal pop in here.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, so I think there is maybe some confusion amongst the public and the, and, and about trees here. You're correct, Mr. Chair. Vice Chair, you are also correct in your assertions, but there is one feature here that might be at play is that under the historic district, there is additional review before you can remove trees. Whereas with the historic district is removed, there is not. You know, there are requirements and code.
Are these trees in the public right of way? That, that does not forego. I was mistaken in my assessment. Certificate of appropriateness is not required for trees removals in the public right of way. Sorry.
But any others on the property would require that. So there might be that component there.
And, okay, so does that?
Yep.
And we have sidewalk already in place, which is a pretty good indication of where that public right of way and easement line is. And if those trees haven't been touched to this point, then that tells me that they're within the, the private property realm, which then would be potentially subject to the historical overlay is based on what you're saying. So that's a consideration anyway.
Okay, disregarding the, you know, character and fabric of the elements in that neighborhood. Overall, reassessing these overlays, from my understanding of the comprehensive plan, is part of the comprehensive plan to see how these overlays actually contribute to the neighborhood that it's in, in its current condition. And with that, I see this as not aligning with the historic overlay requirements as it no longer fulfills that commitment of facing Warm Springs with the geothermal. So yeah, I'm just kind of trying to align this with how we would go setting a precedent if we, however we go on this. Like, I adhere to how the comprehensive plan is written, that we're supposed to kind of review these. And this fits in a review of this overlay and how these parcels have been separated and need to be readdressed as they are, how they fit in with their current neighborhood.
Great, yep. On a case-by-case. Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner Stallings. Appreciate it. And your thoughts or emotion? It's the two shushar cat.
Mr. Chair.
On the commissioner, Commissioner Schaefer.
I move to recommend approval of CAR 25-13 with all the terms and conditions of the staff report.
Okay, I have got a motion by Commissioner Schaefer, and that motion is to recommend approval of the applicant. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Moore. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair, please.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Yeah, thanks, everybody, for your time tonight. Yeah, for me, this is pretty clear, and Commissioner Stallings actually summed it up really well just a few minutes ago. You know, the intent of this overlay is to preserve the historical overlay on Warm Springs, is to preserve the historic structures on Warm Springs Avenue. And of course, we have the, you know, there are conditions related to proximity to the geothermal lines, you know. And the third one being, I guess, just being on Warm Springs itself, I guess, because it's historic structures. So obviously, with the minor land division that occurred previously, we created the three lots, you know, adjacent to Lewis Street. Therefore, we're no longer fronting on Warm Springs Avenue. Those parcels that were created are taking access off of Lewis. There is no change to the zoning, the underlying zoning of any of these parcels. So therefore, to me, this is very, quite clear. You know, if you read the descriptions of the historic design overlay intent, it all relates to buildings, mostly relates to buildings and historic structures. Obviously, these parcels on Lewis are also vacant currently, so there's nothing to tie any sort of historic building to, you know, on these three new parcels on Lewis. So therefore, to me, this seems like a pretty clean application, you know, removing this overlay and not touching the zoning that underlies any of these parcels. I do want to clarify a couple of other points, though, that, you know, this change really does just rely or affect the overlay. Does not affect any other previous approvals on the properties. So the other conditions from those previous approvals will remain intact, right? We have no knowledge of these forthcoming plans related to law consolidation or new homes being built on said lots. So we can't really speak to the details of those applications at this time. So I have no concerns there. I do want to clarify a couple of points at the end of the presentation, though, from Mr. Givens, that there, there will be building permit review for any homes proposed on these parcels, but there will not be any, any design review, public design review commentary on any structures proposed on these parcels. So I just want to make that clear for everybody in the audience. But they will go through a building permit review. So obviously, you know, structural review, building permit review will occur. So I will stop there. That's where I stand. Happy to discuss or answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Schaefer. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I agree with all of that. I think to, you know, additionally, if you're looking at that kind of 95 map, you'll see some of those lots that are fronting Warm Springs aren't that full depth. They're kind of partially. So this isn't creating a condition that doesn't already exist similarly in the neighborhood as well. There's other lots that are kind of that half block that you're seeing that are fronting Lewis Street, no access to the geothermal. And I would suspect that they might not have historic structures either. And that would be why they'd be excluded similar to these, these new lots as well. And then other than that, I agree with Commissioner Schaefer's assessment, you know, and they're still subject to ACHD's driveway separation requirements and all that stuff. So you still have those kind of requirements as well. And I'm assuming the parks would look at any trees that might be removed. So you'd have some review in, in those as well. But other than that, I'm in support of the motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Moore. Any other discussion? Okay, real quick, I just wanna say that map tells us a lot right there. Because what that map shows is a jog in the line. And the jogs go to Lewis Street for the properties that are long and large and just, you know, much grander in some ways. And those properties that are smaller, that front Warm Springs, that's, that line goes up. And so pretty much what we have is that. And so we have severed the property from the front, from the back, and it really just is a continuation of the line immediately to the west. It's, it's pretty much what that is. So I agree with, with, with what's been said, just for the record. Any other comments? Okay, hearing done. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Danley.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Seha.
Aye.
Perez.
Aye.
Stallings.
Aye.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. This concludes our hearing for this evening.